Now we're good. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Village Board, Village of Woodbury Board of Trustees Meeting for June 24th, 2021. Thank you for joining us in what we anticipate is our last virtual village board meeting. We stayed virtual for tonight because of the already advertised public hearings and we'll be going back to live meetings beginning in July. So now just please join me in the pledge of allegiance as and as we look forward to the end of New York State of Emergency in just a few hours. A moment of silence for all those family and friends lost during this pandemic. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. I think we have a record for public hearings prior to the regular meeting. We have four this evening. So first up, that was a continuation of the public hearing from the June 10th meeting. To entertain public comment on a proposed non-exclusive television franchise agreement between the village and Cable Vision of Rockers Falls, Inc., a wholly owned subsidiary of Altice USA. Just before we take additional public comment, I just want to let everyone know we're still awaiting a response from the Department of Public Service on waiving requirement requirements on a new franchise agreement since we're taking over the territory currently involved in the agreement with the town. So is there anyone in the public that wishes to be heard on this issue? Anyone at all? Okay, Brian, is there anything you'd like to say on this issue?
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, members of the board. Just one update I did hear late this afternoon from the Department of Public Service with an email. So I am having a conference call tomorrow with members of the Department of Public Service to get some further guidance on how this is going to proceed. But as I advised, the mayor, I'd recommend that the board continue the public hearing at this point until we have some direction from DPS on how we're going to proceed with this, whether it's alternative application or a confirmation, as they call it. So that's going to be the topic of tomorrow's conversation.
Okay, great. Thank you, Brian. Last opportunity for any members of the public that wish to be heard on this. Okay, with nothing heard, can I have a motion in a second to continue the public hearing until the July 8th meeting?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Trustee Buick with the motion. I saw Trustee Graziano's hand with the second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next up. Public hearing to entertain public comments on introductory local law seven of 2021, which will address the need for a new use and additional flexibility in managing residential properties for gatherings of people and residences. Board is aware that it's required to accommodate a variety of uses while balancing the need to maintain public safety. The proposed regulations are intended to apply to gatherings of people wishing to meet regularly in a residence for purposes other than the usual family functions of celebrating birthdays and holidays. The public notice was printed in the Times Herald Record on June 14th, 2021. So anyone in the public that wishes to be heard on this? Can you either raise your hand with the controls or just speak up?
Mayor, this is Maria Hunter.
This is Hunter.
Sorry, Robin. Um, this is, this is, um, this will not affect, um, like people who have, um, nursery schools or preschool type facilities, right?
No, I wouldn't believe so. They're already permitted under their site plans, correct, Kelly? She's not in her head, yes.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Maria. And Robin, you had something?
Um, I did. I'm sorry for the delay. Um, I appreciate all the work that looks like went into this. I do have some suggestions, however. Um, right off the bat, the first page, when it just, as the title is gathering place. Since I believe the intent of the village board is to create a residential gathering place. Um, that I think it should actually say that right off the bat. So I'm suggesting gathering place slash residential. The reason I bring that up in the comprehensive plan that's adopted on section 2.2, it does discuss gathering places, but it within the hamlets, it doesn't discuss it as residential. So I'm thinking to distinguish between the two. So just make this one slash residential. If that makes any sense. Um, I can go on if you'd like.
Please continue.
In under, uh, definition, I guess, I'm suggesting to leave out, uh, the word where it says the use of a portion of a residential dwelling. I'm suggesting take out the portion of just make it read residential dwelling, because if you have overspill in various parts of that residence, yeah, how are you, how are you gonna kind of conduct that, I guess, is my thought. Um, again, staying with that same paragraph. The very beginning, when it talks about loose affiliations of like-minded people. No offense, what the heck does that mean? I think that needs to be seriously looked at for more concrete conversations. Um, on page two, uh, number four. I think I understand only those applicable accessory uses permitted as of right. Why would you need to say as of right? Just say, uh, whatever accessory uses to that residence, whatever I'm suggesting. Um, it also talks about no kitchen or cooking in the facilities. Well, if it's in a residence, of course, it's going to have a kitchen. So I'm not sure what the board means with that conversation. Um, number, page three, number 11, the gathering place shall maintain the appearance of a residence. Again, if it's the village board's intention to make gathering places within the residence, why would it need to have an appearance of a residence? It's already existing, is my thought, anyway. Um, page four, number 17, it talks about, um, renewing the permit, special permit required. Um, and under when it's, um, upon its need to be renewed and to possibly, um, to allow, uh, not to have a public hearing upon renewal. My thought is, because this is new, let's see what happens in a year or two and then possibly look at waiving that that clause in there as well. Um, and that's all I have for tonight.
Great. Thanks for the, uh, thanks for reviewing that, Robin, and providing some comment. We appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Is there anyone else in the public that has any comment on this?
I have a couple of comments.
Who is that, please?
Neil.
Oh, Neil, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Yeah, I had an opportunity to watch the planning board meeting.
Yeah.
Planning board discussed this, uh, in, uh, a proposed law and, and I guess detail. Uh, they had, uh, they had, uh, several points that they were going to bring up to the village board. And they were also, I believe, they were going to be asking for a face-to-face with the village board. Whether it be representatives of the two boards or the full boards meeting before this was done, because there were issues about how this was going to be enforced and other issues. And I was just wondering if that has taken place?
It has not taken place, and it was something I was going to be commenting on in just a minute. I was on that meeting as well, and we did receive written comment from them, so.
I mean, my, my, my suggestion was, my suggestion is possibly have that meeting and hold this, hold the public, uh, hold the, uh, public meeting open until had an opportunity to meet with them, hear their concerns, discuss enforcement of this, uh, law, and then, uh, then continue the, uh, public hearing.
Thanks, Neil. Anything else? Okay, anybody else in the public? Okay, I'll give one more chance for the public after I just read some comments. So the law was referred to the county department of planning on May 28th, and they replied, they found no evidence that significant intermunicipal or countywide impacts would result from its approval. The law was also referred to the planning board, as Neil just pointed out, and they replied with concerns regarding enforcement and requested a joint meeting with the village board. The law was also referred to the building department, and they replied that the law as written would be very difficult to enforce, and they would not be in favor of this law as written. Comments were also received from the village engineer addressed to the planning board chairman highlighting 15 recommendations related to the proposed law. So considering all of the written comment that I don't know if everyone's had a chance to get through yet. Neil's comments this evening, Robin's comments this evening, and anything else that we do get. I think I'd like to keep this public meeting, uh, excuse me, this public hearing open at least until the July 8th meeting. But I leave it at the discretion of the board. I think it's just a little premature to even meet jointly yet until we've had the opportunity to review everything. What does the board think?
I agree.
Uh, that was Tara. Thank you. Okay.
Need a motion?
So with that said, with that said.
And if I could, just a second, um, you might want to adjourn it to your July 22nd meeting just because of the Fourth of July weekend to make sure that you can coordinate having that meeting with the planning board. That way you don't have to feel the pressure of having it on for the eighth. But I leave it to the board, just a suggestion.
No, that makes sense. Um, so before we, I take any motions, uh, is there anyone else in the public that wants to comment during this segment of the public hearing? Okay, so then I'm looking for a motion in a second to keep this public hearing open until the July 22nd village board meeting regularly scheduled.
I'll make that.
Jacque Mazza with the motion, Trustee Gomez with the second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And I will. Great, thanks. Next up, uh, one more. We have a public hearing to entertain public comments on introductory local law eight of 2021, which will update and amend chapter 310 zoning of the village code with respect to the number of colors permitted on signs within the village. Public notice is printed in the Times Herald Record on June 13th, 2021. So I'm going to make some comments first before we go out to the public. This law was referred to the county department of planning on May 28th, and they replied, they found no evidence that significant intermunicipal or countywide impacts would result from its approval. The law was referred to the planning board, and they replied, they found the law satisfactory. Laws referred to the building department and may reply, one, they've been in conversation with the Woodbury Chamber of Commerce that's proposed some changes to the signs signage bulk tables for several years and was unsure if these other changes should be incorporated into this change. And two, they asked for confirmation that any sign would not need review by the planning board would still be required to comply with a maximum of four colors, three for multi-tenant directories, or appear before the zoning board of appeals for variance. Comments were also received from the village engineer addressed to the planning board, highlighting the two recommendations on the proposed law. So at this point, I'll go out to the public. Does anybody in the public have anything they'd like to say about this?
Maria Hunter, Mayor.
This is Hunter. Proceed.
Um, thank you for the board putting this law together and re-reviewing it, because it's a long time coming with certain things with colors and whatnot. And also thank you for entertaining the submission from the Woodbury Chamber. So, um, I'm glad that we're that Gary met with the chamber and they presented the information to the board. So thank you on behalf of the chamber.
Okay, thank you, Maria. Anybody else? Okay, so with that said, can I have a motion in a second to close the public here?
Make the motion.
Trustee Jacque Mazza with his hand up first for the motion and Trustee Buick with the second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Now would I? Okay, thank you. Now I'm looking for a motion in a second to adopt local law number eight of 2021 to update and amend chapter 310 zoning of the village, of the village code. Trustee Graziano with the motion, Trustee Buick with the second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I would, I. Desiree, roll call, please.
Mayor Egan?
Aye.
E Burke?
Aye.
Trustee Jacque Mazza? Trustee, Trustee Gomez?
Aye.
Trustee Graziano?
Aye.
Very good.
Mayor, before you move on, are we going to answer the one question raised by the building department with regards to signs that do not require to go before the planning board?
Uh, yes, good idea. Kelly, do you have that answer?
I didn't see his comments. However, um, if there's a standard that's a guideline, it still does have to comply with those requirements in the code.
Okay.
Um, but that being said, could you forward me his comments as well as those of the chamber so I can take a look?
I don't have the chamber comments. Um, I think that's something that Gary, he's no longer here, was working on in the chamber with over the past couple of years, but I will ask the building department if they have them to forward them to you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so then before I ask for a motion, uh, in a second to, uh, adopt this. Do we want to, do we want to adjourn this?
You just adopted it.
You already.
You're right. I apologize. I'm looking at the next one already. Okay, we answer your question? Good.
Well, pass it on to the building department, what was said.
All right, very good. All right, next up is introductory local law nine of 2021. We have a public hearing to entertain public comments on introductory local law nine of 2021, which will enable the village of Woodbury to opt out of hosting retail cannabis dispensaries and or onsite cannabis consumption establishments within its boundaries. Public notice is printed in the Times Herald Record on June 16th, 2021. Anyone in the public? Last call for anyone in the public. Uh, Matt, are you raising your hand to bring something up, Mr. Higgins?
Yeah, I'm not in favor of, um, stopping businesses from being set up. I don't think it's good. I think we need more businesses in this, in this community, not less. And I'm tired of seeing all of these laws being passed. It's way too many laws. Who came up with this idea? Who's, who's, who, who sponsored this legislation? It's costing us a lot of money every time they come up with these laws.
Okay, Matt, anything else?
No, I'd just like to know who's sponsoring these laws. If you're going to have laws, we should know who's behind it.
Well, there's not a corporate sponsor, if that's what you're asking.
No, I mean.
Sponsored by the village board.
The village board. I mean, which guy came up with this idea?
It's not necessary to identify any particular individual with regard.
It would be nice if we could, but thank you.
Okay. Anybody else in the public? Last call. Okay, with that said, can I please have a motion in a second to close the public hearing?
Make the motion.
Trustee Buick with the motion.
I'll second it.
Jacque Mazza with the second. Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now I'm looking for a motion in a second to declare the village of Woodbury Board of Trustees as lead agency under secret for this introductory local law. Trustee Gomez with the motion. Thank you.
Second.
Trustee Buick with the second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Now I'm looking for a motion in a second to type this action as a type one under secret.
I'll make the motion.
Trustee Graziano with the motion.
I'll second it.
Trustee Jacque Mazza with the second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I would, I. Okay, now just a brief discussion on the environmental impact statement. Does anybody have any questions for attorney Norton with regard to the EIS? Kelly, is there anything you want to bring up with regard to the EIS?
No, I think this one is actually pretty clear, pretty straightforward for the board.
Agreed. Just wanted to pause for that. Great, thank you. All right, so now I'm looking for a motion in a second to type this action as a negative declaration under secret.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Trustee Graziano for the motion.
I'll second it.
Trustee Gomez with the second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I would, I. Does the board want to discuss this at all before I call for a motion in a second to adopt or not adopt?
Okay.
Okay, so now I'm looking for a motion in a second to adopt local law number nine of 2021 pursuant to cannabis law section 131, opting out of licensing and establishing retail cannabis dispensaries and onsite cannabis consumption establishments within the village of Woodbury.
Mr. Mayor, can I just pause for a second? I just want to read off some of the comments on Facebook. So there is commenting, uh, going on there about this local law. So I just, I just have to get to the comment section.
No.
So, all right, let me just. Let me try.
I just.
Yeah, I know, I know, I know. I'm just, I'm just trying to be.
That's fine. I want to be as thorough as possible as well.
Exactly, exactly. And I cannot.
That's fine. If there's anything out there, I'd like to know about it.
You're not going to be able to go backwards, Andrew, because it's a live stream. So you tell me, this is real time.
Brady Del Vecchio, who said, do not adopt. Um, Daisy Duke or Linda, uh, I know her position on this, so I know she is in favor of adopting the law. But I can't go backwards, as you said.
No, you can't. It's live stream.
Not even on the cell phone?
I have them on my cell phone if you want me to read them.
That's, yeah, please.
Okay, so it says that Randy Del Viccio says, no, we absolutely need additional taxes in a time of water crisis. More revenue for the city. Daisy Duke said, I request an extension for additional people to make public comments. Wow, are you kidding? Brady Del Viccio says, what the actual heck are you people doing not allowing comment? Daisy Duke says, with a scrolling of eyes emoji, this is ridiculous, ignoring Facebook comments. Randy W2O says, do not adopt. And then Daisy Duke says, this is a critical time for tax revenue for the village, and that's all I see.
Okay.
Thank you, Desiree.
You're welcome.
Okay, um, I find myself, uh, not disagreeing with the concept of holding this open for at least one more meeting, just so we can get some additional comment, that there might be some written comment that we'd want to get. Um, so I will entertain a motion to either hold this over until our July 8th meeting or to vote for it now, whichever you guys want to do.
Well, no.
You'd have to resend your motion to close then.
Or you could just accept written comments for a certain period of time. Or you could vote now. It's up to you.
Well, when I was reading the law, they didn't state that even if you opt out, you can later then decide to opt back in.
That's correct. Do you, if you want to opt out, you have to opt out by December 31st.
You can always opt in any other.
You can opt in at any time, but you won't have another opportunity to opt out.
Right.
I'm ready, I'm ready to vote.
Yep, me too. Are you ready?
Well, somebody, I, I asked for a motion, uh, to adopt, if I'm not mistaken, correct, Kelly?
No, you said to hold it.
No, well, I said, I asked for the motion first, so we either have to resend that motion or we have to make a new motion.
All right, I'll make the motion to adopt.
I'll second that.
Okay, so then discussion.
I already did.
Personally, I don't know what the rush would be, why we couldn't hold off for just one more meeting. And allow the public to, to send in written comment or whatnot. Uh, we're going to be in person at our next meeting, so they can come and they could speak in person. Uh, like Jesus said, we can always opt back in later, uh, so it's not a rush. But I'm more in favor of just waiting, waiting one more meeting. So.
At this point, we have to vote this up or down. We have a motion in a second, so let's finish discussion and then we can vote.
Okay.
Did you have anything else, Andrew?
No, that's it.
Jesus, did you have anything to add?
Hello.
Okay, Chris, anything to add? Tara? Okay, I, I agree with, uh, Trustee Jacque Mazza. I, I don't see the rush into voting on this, uh, tonight. Uh, and I also, uh, find myself agreeing with a couple of the comments and a couple of the people, and I have been thinking about this a lot over the past few days. Uh, I'm not crazy about the idea of restricting commerce, uh, regardless of, of what it's for. If this is a legal permissible product or use, I, I'm not sure why we should be controlling or restricting that. I, and I think the argument would be quality of life. But I find myself thinking, no, but at this point, uh, let's have the vote. So all in favor of adopting?
Aye.
Trustee Graziano, Trustee Gomez, all opposed?
I have to actually do a roll call? I'm sorry, because it's a local.
I just, I just want to do this first. All right, so go ahead and do the roll call, guys.
Okay, sorry. Mayor Egan?
No.
Trustee Buick?
No.
Didn't hear you, guys.
Trustee Jacque Mazza?
No.
Trustee Gomez?
Yes.
And Trustee Graziano?
Yes.
Okay, so therefore the motion fails three to one, you two.
Okay. Thank you all. All right, next up, we have a scheduled violations hearing pursuant to property maintenance law section 249C, although there are none received for this meeting, so we can just move right on. All right, so that.
Mick?
Yes.
With that last vote, is that, was that to rescind?
That was to vote no, not to do it.
Not, not to opt out, you mean?
Correct, not to opt out.
Not to have just the open session?
The vote was to adopt the law. Vote was to adopt the laws presented. Two of you voted yes, three of you voted no, so the law did not get adopted.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions on that? Okay, very good. All right, so that's four public hearings. Again, I think that's a record for us. Uh, so now let's move on to public comment on agenda items only. Is there anyone in the public that has anything they'd like to say on any agenda items? Matt Higgins? Matt Higgins, you're waving your hand. I assume you have something.
No. Hi, uh, sorry about that.
Worries, go ahead, man.
So, um, I'm not quite sure if you've gotten to this about the, uh, well, I want to say, I want to repeat again, it's getting difficult to keep up with all these new laws and the board has been passing, you know, quite a few, and a reminder, laws are costly.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna stop you there. I, I, Kelly, can we accept the comment like that? Because we don't have any new local laws on here. Well, actually, we do.
You got four of them, don't you?
Yeah, all right, go ahead. I'm sorry. So, yeah, that's fine.
It's a reminder, these laws are costing the taxpayers money, very likely a lot of money, considering the time it must taken to create them. As, as I went through them, the one that really stuck out that bothered me the most was this gathering business. Now, like the rest of the unconstitutional edicts we put up with, adding gathering laws seems insane to me. It's ridiculous on the surface, restricting. And I'm totally not in favor of doing away with the constitution like we've seen all throughout this whole pandemic. So I advise you not to go ahead and try to do that. And I don't know what it's for, why you're doing this, but it makes no sense now. The emergency is over. And it's time to, you know, get rid of your executive orders, and all of them should be dropped. And especially this gathering sticks out to me, like people can't meet together, you know, and you're going to restrict that. Well, you know what? That's wrong. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Matt, for your comments. Anybody else in the public have any comments on agenda items?
I do, Tim. It's Neil.
Go ahead, Bill.
Regarding the, uh, speed limit on Route 32 that you're going to be discussing is I'm in favor of having a consistent speed limit at minimal. I think we have five speed, uh, zone changes from like up around Ridge Road down to Woodbury Commons. I think it goes from 40 to 30, to 40, to 30, to 40, or whatever. And I'm just in favor of having, if the, if the village can work it out with the DOT to have one consistent speed limit, probably from, say, Ridge Road down to the Commons. I, I mean, my only concern will be enforcement. If we don't, if we don't enforce it, it won't, it won't help, but everybody from Woodbury and Monroe and every place like that knows what happens when you go down through Tuxedo. When they have their speed limit posted in Tuxedo, you follow their, their posted speed. Or you will be sitting on the side of the road and they'll be writing you up. So as long as enforcement can go along with this, I think, I think this is a great idea. I mean, I'll tell you, 30 seems a little slow when you're going down, you're going down 32, so might maybe look at 35 or something. You're going down thirty two, so might maybe look at thirty five or something, but.
We'll discuss that, absolutely.
I would just have it consistent, so it's not, and I think if, if the truck drivers have to keep. Or have to go through thirty miles an hour. It might cut back a little on the truck traffic, right now. I've been out there at night a few times looking uh for the dog that got out. And man, they go, they go by our house. Which is up here near, across from the new town hall, they, they, they seem like they're doing about sixty miles an hour.
Probably are. Yeah, if I remember Neil several years ago, when we first, when we talked about this, you were in favor then as well, so thanks for the comment.
All right, thanks.
Anybody? Yes.
Mayor Egan, Maria Hunter again. In regards to the, the village board, uh, looking at the DOT uh request to lower the speed limit. Um, I happened to speak with um. Trustee Burek last night, um, when you do discuss this, um. What ramifications does this have asking for the speed to re, re, be reduced? Towards the designated truck route, that was one of my questions to Tara last night. Um, and she said she would look into it, but I just wanted to, you know, verbally state that. And also, if you are considering lowering the speed limit. I've been trying since, oh my goodness, since Bob Till was supervisor way long time ago. From Ridge Road North to at least past the trestle or to, or to Troutbrook Road. It's fifty five miles an hour, it picks up and. People are doing fifty five way before they get to Ridge Road when they're heading north. So if the village board can consider this and if they go forward to the DOT, that the speed limit be considered. Maybe forty from Ridge Road to Troutbrook, because. In history, if you go back, you can find there are numerous accidents that have occurred over the years from Ridge Road North and um. It's something to look into, and I would ask the board to take that into consideration as well, thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, anybody else? Matt, did you have your hand up again, or was that just from before?
Yes, I did.
Okay, please, go ahead.
Yeah, so. In, in talking about reducing the speed limit or asking for permission to do that through the state. You know, um, one of the things that I would say is. That. At a minimum, you should be able to get deer crossing signs. And put them up north of Ridge Road. Several of them. Because I did a study on the amount of deer accidents. And you'd be surprised that how many people are, are running into deer or dogs or cats or. Or all kinds of stuff. And that would be an easy pitch to make to them, that we need that. And I have the study. And I think you should work with the town as well, and, and I think everybody would support some kind of action, at least. At least that much, put up some deer crossing signs and um, I think that would help. Because they are smashing into them constantly. I mean, you just check the road, if you go north of Ridge and you'll see. All of the carcasses or whatever. But the idea of trying to reduce it, you, you're never gonna get it down to thirty. You know, if you, if you shot for forty five, I think you'd be looking at a, a good number. But, you know, good luck with that, and, you know, like I said, if you want that study, I'll give it to you and you, and you, and I can give it to the town as well. Because that's uh something the others think about.
I'd be happy to look at any materials you want to pass along, Matt, thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right, anybody else?
Yes, hi, good evening, everybody. Hi, hi, Mayor Egan, how are you?
Good, thank you, how you doing this evening?
Good, good, um, I just wanted to quickly voice support um for uh lowering the speed limit on thirty two. Um, I should add that I'm co-chair of the land preservation committee, so this is something that. Um, we discussed in our meetings as being um a great addition to um. Uh, I guess a re, a re-up of the, of the comprehensive plan. Um, and all of that, um, growing up, I know that, you know, having friends who live near Route thirty two, it was always a thing that. You know, you can go wherever you want, just you're not allowed to cross Route thirty two, it's, it's a, it's a highway, we're afraid you'll get hit by a car, and I think um. It might be a very simplistic example, but I think that it's important to remind motorists that there is a town here, that there are kids running back and forth. Especially in that area around Jay's Deli and the pharmacy. So I just wanted to voice my unequivocal support for that, um, and wherever it's possible to do that, at least in the more kind of populated areas. Um, and I know that we've already sort of moved on from the, the marijuana discussion, but I also wanted uh to, to voice support for um. Uh, fully embracing and, and ensuring that we can receive the tax revenue from that by allowing um. A business the right to set up here in Woodbury if they so choose, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah.
Brandon, did you have something?
Can you hear me?
Yep, go ahead.
Just to be uh piggyback on the deer crossing signs, just give you a little additional information, you simply need to contact the DOT. If they have, they have records of high volumes of deer hits, deer carcasses. And they'll be able to supply the information and they base those signs. Based on the information that I, what I believe it was Matt. Was talking about, so if he's got that information. Um, you know, he'll be able to provide it to you, you simply contact the Newburgh office of the DOT. And they'll be able to correlate that information. Uh, and then they can move forward with putting up deer crossing signs.
Okay. Very good. Okay, anybody else? Okay, very good, let me just make sure there's no hands up there, okay. Very good, thank you, so let's move on to administrative business. Looking for a motion in a second to accept receipt of the minutes of the meeting held June tenth, twenty twenty one.
Take the motion.
Trustee Burek with the motion and trustee Jacque Mazza with the second, thank you, any discussion? All in favor? I'm looking for a motion in a second to approve abstract two containing vouchers two one zero zero seven three. Through two one zero one six nine, totaling one hundred fifty one thousand, six hundred fifty one dollars and twenty cents.
Did we lose CJ?
We did.
Do we know when we lost CJ? Because I was typing and I didn't notice.
I, I was looking to the right.
Okay.
Oh, well, just, I'll just keep an eye on it to come back in.
Okay.
So just make a note, I guess, of the time.
I'll make a note that he, that he exited before you made the motion on the minute, sorry, I just looked up and I was like, um, there's someone missing.
Very good.
He left, his picture disappeared when Brandon came on, that's when you lost him.
Thank you, Mrs. Hunter.
Okay, so again, looking for that motion and a second to approve abstract two containing vouchers two one zero zero seven three. Okay, thank you, trustee Gomez with the motion. Trustee Burek with the second, any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Fire department equipment requests, looking for a motion in a second to approve fire department equipment request. Twenty twenty one dash sixteen, totaling approximately two hundred three dollars and eighty cents for the purchase of four front helmet shields for officers. Trustee Gomez with the motion. Trustee Jacque Mazza with the second, any discussion? All in favor? I would, I, thank you. All right, moving on to old business. Uh, first, there are two extra items under old business, so the first is an advertised for bids. Looking for a motion in a second to authorize the village clerk to advertise for bids. For the improvements to waste distribution, excuse me, to water distribution system hydrant replacement. The community development grant fiscal year twenty twenty will fund approximately seven fire hydrant replacements in the village. Trustee Jacque Mazza with the motion and trustee Burek with the second, thank you, any discussion? All in favor? And just for the record, I still haven't seen Chris come back in. Second extra item, oh, as soon as I said it, here he comes. I'm gonna hold off on this one until he comes back in. Welcome back, Chris. Okay.
Never mind.
I'm sorry?
You said, never mind, I was gonna say, I was gonna say something about internet, but never mind.
We extended that public hearing to the one next meeting. An extra item number two under old business, we need to schedule a public hearing, I'm looking for a motion in a second to schedule a public hearing. To be held on July eighth, twenty twenty one at seven thirty PM. To entertain public comments on revised introductory local law ten of twenty twenty. Which will institute a moratorium on certain permits, certificates of occupancy and approvals.
I'll make that motion.
Trustee Graziano with the motion, trustee Burek with the second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I would, I, now looking for a motion in a second to recognize this introductory local law as a type two under secret.
I'll make that motion.
Trustee Jacque Mazza with the motion, trustee Gomez with the second, any discussion? All in favor? Also referrals to Orange County planning and the planning board were done previously with the prior version of this local law. And attorney Norton has opined that there is no need to do the referrals again, so we don't need to do that. So we'll just uh move on with the public hearing. New business, building permit fee waiver requests, I received a request from town of Woodbury supervisor Frank Palermo. Requesting the waiver of all building permit fees relating to the construction of the reconstruction of the John P Burke pool. So I'm looking for a motion in a second to approve the waiver.
Make a motion.
Trustee Burek for the motion. Trustee Jacque Mazza with the second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Lead agency notice, have a notice of intent to be lead agent, excuse me, a notice of intent to be lead agency. Was received from the planning board as it relates to the application of the village of Woodbury. For a two lot subdivision located along county Route one oh five and Penny Lane. Just tax map two nineteen dash five dash twenty one point two. This is being done as the part of the settlement that was agreed upon relating to the town versus village lawsuit. So now I'm asking for a motion in a second to relay to the planning board that the village board consents to them serving as lead agency for this application. Trustee Mazza with the motion, thank you. Now the second, trustee Graziano with the second, thank you, any discussion? All in favor? I would, I. We also have a notice of intent to be lead agency that was received from the planning board as it relates to the application of Highland Mills Center Group LLC. And Lakeside Affiliates LLC subdivision, site plan, special permit and architectural review. Located along Route thirty two, tax map two eighteen dash two dash seven, nine, ten, eleven, thirteen and one zero three. So I'm looking for a motion in a second to relay to the planning board that the village board consents to them serving as lead agency for this application. Trustee Gomez with the motion. I almost said Kelly Norton with the second, because you raised your hand there for a second. Trustee Jacque Mazza with the second, any discussion? All in favor? I would, I, very good. Okay, so now the request to New York State DOT discussion, so we are, we as a board are concerned about the speed limit on Route thirty two as we've discussed in the past. And the frequent speed changes from one end of the village to the other. The board and I believe the public would like a more consistent speed limit. So before seeking a motion, we need to decide on what we'd like to see for a speed limit on Route thirty two in the village, so let's have that discussion. Who wants to lead it off? Chris, go ahead.
Oh, I was gonna, I wasn't gonna lead it off, but now you put me on the spot.
You brought it up in the past.
If um, if you want, the clamor from the residents is to have a consistent speed, but what that speed is, I'm not sure. Um, you know, I think the, what's the rest of the village down, it, it, it's inconsistent, but it's around thirty to thirty five, right?
Thirty, the village speed limit is thirty, but there are, I, I don't think there's thirty five, I think it's thirty and in some areas twenty.
There's some that are forty, like Ridge Road's got forties in it.
That's a state highway and we, you know, right now, we don't control that, so yeah.
Ridge Road is all thirty now, it used to be forty, but when they.
Yeah, we, so we, we did work with the county. Uh, on Ridge Road, speed limit, oh God, that had to be ten years ago, those. It was quite a while ago, and we were successfully able to get that changed to thirty, the whole length of Ridge Road.
It's got forty mile an hour signs on it right by my, right before.
Forty caution signs, yeah, yeah, because of the curb there.
No, no. If you go right past the turn onto um, where you go up to my house, and not rage, I'm talking about one oh five, I apologize, wrong guy.
One oh five is forty, yeah.
One oh five's got forties and thirties and fifty fives and then thirties and then fours, it's the same principle. I think that's what Maria brought up before.
I'm convinced you can't even tell what the speed limit is on one oh five in some places.
Yeah.
So, I mean, if we want to make it consistent with the rest of the village, then a thirty mile an hour speed, and I think that's fair. Considering the amount of foot traffic that you can potentially get in, in, in sections of um. The village, you know, down by, you know, going down by Smith Close Road, going through where all the shops are, down by Jay's and Mary's and everything. You gotta, you get a lot of foot traffic back and forth, so you know, I think thirty is a sufficient speed to go up and down that road at that point.
So just to be clear, we're talking about Route thirty two right now, if we want to entertain another discussion about one oh five, I think that'd be great. But I don't think we should mix and match right.
No, no, I had it in my, I'm just.
No worries, but I, you're, I think you're, you're spot on, I think we need to talk about that as well. But right now, let's, let's finish up with thirty two, so you think thirty, Chris, is that what you said?
I think we should match the rest of the village and just have a consistent throughout the village, it'd be, it'd be a lot easier to enforce if. This feeling was the same in the entire village limits.
I also think it'd be a lot easier to understand on the part of the residents and the people that pass through the village as well. So I don't disagree with that. Okay, uh, Andrew, you look like you have something to say.
Yeah, I, I, I agree with Chris, I think that for the most part, residents of Woodbury, I would like to believe. Are not the ones that are flying through Woodbury at, you know, fifty five miles an hour on Route thirty two. Except for the, except for the former police officers who have uh get out of jail cards. Like Mr. Gomez.
Listen, I'm the one that stops.
Yes.
For Jay's to let people cross, because the other.
My friend, you understand the law.
And none of this changing of.
All right, it's back on topic.
Thirty, thirty five, forty, none of that's gonna do any bit of difference. And it's this actual enforcement, and it's actually a crackdown like. Uh, Robert and uh Mr. Kraus commented. Why is everyone scared of driving through Tuxedo over thirty? Because they get hammered. That's the only way anything's ever gonna change on Route thirty two. And if you think otherwise, you're living in the clouds. Take it from a cop, take it from any other captain, tell you. Do the same thing. Want to change it to twenty? You're still gonna get people doing fifty, you're not gonna change anything unless it's enforced.
We can certainly communicate with the police department on that issue, but in the meantime, let's focus on uh.
But I have no problems with thirty, I do that anyway, so it wouldn't bother me much.
So you want a thirty, okay, or you agree with thirty? All right, so that's three, that's a thirty, Tara, what do you think?
Thirty.
Okay, anything else we want to talk about before I look for a motion? All right, so I'm looking for a motion in a second to request the New York State Department of Transportation to approve a speed zone sign, excuse me.
Speed limit?
Looking for a motion in a second to authorize the mayor to send a letter to the New York State Department of Transportation requesting. That they consider making the speed limit on Route thirty two from Woodbury Common to Ridge Road to be thirty miles an hour.
Make the motion.
Trustee Burek with the motion, trustee Graziano with the second, any further discussion on this?
Can you also request to have like uh signs put up?
That's what I just started.
Oh, okay, because, you know, you're going from like they say.
We're gonna do that.
And it's big change from fifty five to thirty, it's gonna be a real.
Any further discussion of the speed itself?
Yes, no.
Okay, yes, no, got it, all right, all in favor? Okay, now I'm looking for a motion in a second to request the New York State DOT approve a speed zone sign in this area as well, or multiple speed zone signs.
Thank you.
Trustee Gomez with the motion, thank you, trustee Jacque Mazza with the second, any discussion? All in favor? How about I? Have one final extra item, it's a fire department radio maintenance contract. Looking for a motion in a second to authorize the mayor to sign a contract with Goose Town Communications. For the maintenance of the radios used by the fire department at a cost of one thousand four hundred forty dollars per month. Or seventeen thousand two hundred eighty dollars for the year.
I'll make that.
Trustee Gomez with the motion. Trustee Graziano with the second, any discussion? All in favor? All right, that concludes regular business, so now we'll move on to public comment. Anyone in the public have anything they'd like to say at all?
Maria Hunter, once again, if I may.
Go ahead, Maria.
Um. Last night, um, we had a um. A mini site visit with the revitalization and beautification and everyone who was present with that um. Ad hoc committee that you, we are meeting along. Smith Close Road, and I know the village speed limit is thirty miles an hour. But something has to be done, maybe the village board can reach out to the school. There are no signs saying that there's a school and please reduce your speed limit, there are other areas and within the Orange County. That where there are schools, because. Whether it be fifteen miles an hour, there's a school present. Whether it be fifteen miles an hour, there's a school present, um. We talked about this briefly last night and some of the other people said they would come to the meeting and possibly speak, but. I'm speaking on my behalf and I think the speed limit. Is not adhered to at all, I mean, you've got people speeding crazily down that road, it's a hill. Even if you go near the crosswalk, crosswalk, excuse me, and Jesus, I do stop at the crosswalk to let people cross like you do. If you stand in that crosswalk, you're almost able to get hit because people are, they're ludicrous. If the village could possibly get that road from the top of thirty two to the trestle. And somehow, whether you have to have a public hearing or whatever, whatever you have to do, maybe with the school. I really think it needs to be addressed, I know the police have had their one sign that they move around the village and town areas. Where it flashes what your speed limit is, um, they recently had it up on Ridge Road a couple weeks ago and I, people were. Doing the thirty miles an hour because they saw the sign, um, so something could, needs to be done for Smith Close because. Tara, you can shake your head and you, you agree, someone almost, it's, it's crazy, so that's my only thing about on tonight with the public comment.
I think they go faster down Smith Close than they do on thirty two.
In some, in some cases.
Crazy.
I, I agree.
Okay, thanks Maria, Matt Higgins, you have your hand up, or still have?
Yeah, so, so look, you're going into this whole restriction of buildings because we're running. Low on water and you're looking into a hydrologist and that's great, you know, that's really super. The one biggest draw in the whole village, you all know what that is. And you could, you could pretend like you can't do anything, but I'm sure you're gonna, I'm sure you're gonna try. And and resolve the biggest drawdown in the whole village, because the aquifer is being dewatered. Massively. And and I, I appreciate all you're gonna do with that, because I don't want to pay higher rates. We should consider, the, the aquifer should be protected and that's all I have to say and thank you very much.
Thanks, Matt.
I know you'll do your best and I appreciate it.
Thank you, Matt, Brandon, I saw your hand up, go ahead. Brandon, there you go.
Uh, yeah, I just wanted to thank, um, can you hear me okay?
Yep, we're good. Yes, we can hear you, Brandon.
I put your hand out.
Okay, just wanted to thank uh, you mayor, trustee Graziano and trustee Buick for. Coming to the first responders day that we had on June twelfth, it was a fun time had by all. You know, I just, it was nice to see everybody, everybody had a great time, we raised a lot of money for the. Food pantry through the five K with the participants and private donations. So just wanted to extend my, my sincere thanks and it was nice to see everybody, you know, hanging out, we took a lot of pictures together, we're working on all the photos. You can see those in the future, we'll have those out and uh, just, just a nice day, so thank you very much.
Thanks, Brandon. Uh, Robin and Neil, you're unmuted, so I assume you had something you wanted to say?
Yes, I just wanted to uh, comment about during the, during this last year, the pandemic. I think the village board should take a lot of credit for making the meetings as accessible as possibly they could be made accessible. And some of the comments tonight on some of the public hearings where people were saying there's no opportunity to speak. Or and and things like that is, this board has given. Everybody, I think, more than ample opportunity to have their concerns heard and acted on. And you know, through, through the public hearings, through the uh, twice monthly meetings, through email, through everything else. And I just think that it's not just the five of you, it has to be the community supporting you in what you do. I mean, going back to live meetings, I think will be great, but I will, and Robin and I usually attend those as we can and we're. As we continue to during the pandemic, but I'd like to see how many of the people who uh, will voice their. Will maybe say something, will actually show up physically at a public hearing now. And actually voice their concerns and their support, because I do know. That attorneys and other paid representatives of uh, special interest will show up. So if we aren't, if we as a public. Um, and the residents of Woodbury don't show up, shame on us. And thank you.
Thanks, Neil, did Robin have anything?
No, thank you, sir.
Okay, thanks, Robin, Brandon, did you have your hand up again or is that still from before?
That's from before.
Okay, very good, thank you, anyone else from the public have anything they'd like to say? Okay, we will move on to. Board members and department heads, uh, so in just a few hours, the state of emergency in New York will be over. Just a few hours, it's been a very long road since early last year when the COVID nineteen pandemic first hit our nation. We had to adjust to many things, including wearing masks, more frequent hand washing, working from home, remote meetings and many other things. Many of us have lost friends and family or both. As your village board, our overriding focus was ensuring continuity of your local government and no interruption in services. The governor's executive orders gave us, gave us flexibility in how we do business. When restaurants were forced to cut in half the number of customers they could serve, I was able to sign an executive order allowing outdoor dining for the other fifty percent. The intent was to give restaurants the opportunity to generate as much revenue as possible during the pandemic. Several establishments took advantage of this, unfortunately though, with the elimination of this provision under the governor's executive orders, this local benefit now goes away. Anyone wishing to continue outdoor dining will have to appear before the planning board to amend their site plans. Regarding virtual meetings, there's still pending in the states, excuse me, in the senate and assembly bills. That will allow the continuation of virtual and or hybrid meetings, however, beginning tomorrow, Friday the twenty fifth. Unless they're passed and signed into law by the governor, moving forward, we will only be permitted to have traditional in-person meetings. We will attempt to continue live streaming, but public participation will only be permitted in person beginning at our next meeting on July eighth. This also applies to zoning board of appeals meetings as well as planning board meetings. And I want to take a moment to congratulate Woodbury Community Ambulance for receiving the EMS agency of the year award from the Orange County EMS Council. And Tony Maggio for receiving the basic life support provider of the year award. As we know, Tony was lost to us due to COVID nineteen. These awards now go to the regional level and will be considered by the Hudson Valley Regional EMS Council for regional recognition. I have certificates on behalf of the village board to present to both the ambulance corps and Tony, and we'll do that in person, hopefully at our next meeting. Our dedicated EMS agencies, both volunteer and commercial, serve Orange County with commitment and pride every day. We're grateful for their dedication and I think it's important that they are all recognized for everything they do to keep us safe. These men and women are ready twenty four seven to provide lifesaving care to our residents. Lastly, just a quick water update, as you know, at the last meeting, we hired a hydrogeologist. We'll begin meeting with our engineers and the water department on July seventh to begin reevaluating our water supply. Our most recent rehabilitated well is doing better than we initially expected. We'll soon pull another underperforming well for rehab and that will give us another increase in production when complete in about a month. Due to the low performance of that well currently, there should be no negative impact to the current supply, considering the increase in the previous well rehab. When that additional supply comes online after the next rehab, we expect to be able to remove outdoor watering restrictions by the end of July. Thank you for joining us this evening and I look forward to seeing you all in per, in person at our next meeting. So let's go down to trustee Graziano.
Good evening, uh, everybody, thank you for attending. First, I'd like to say that I agree that it's wonderful news that the governor has ended our state of emergency as of today. Now that vaccine rates are up and infection rates are extremely low, I have a renewed sense of optimism that I have not felt in over a year. I look forward to having the live meetings and seeing everyone in person again, as well as once again, holding and participating in public events that we all miss so dearly. We've had a lot of people working hard in community groups who have many great ideas and I look forward to all them coming to fruition in the coming months. Next, I'd like to discuss a topic that actually sad and disappoints me. When Tara and I decided to run for office, we did it for one reason, to help people. We both felt we had professional and life experience that would be an asset to our community and help us move it forward for generations to come. We didn't do it because we wanted to be politicians, we don't. We didn't do it for power as we both have very fulfilling professional lives where we're considered experts in our field. We stepped up and offered our services to our community despite the rigors of our professional lives. We take a large part of the precious little leisure time we have with our families and give it back freely to our community. Because we care deeply about leaving Woodbury in a better place for the next generation. In fact, the four of us as trustees have only been together for a short eighteen months. Sixteen of which have been during a terrible global pandemic. Despite the challenges that this has presented, we have passed over a dozen local laws that protect our environment. Continue to balance the zoning code and provide it for a better quality of life for all. We have formed citizen committees and are actively working on recommendations for our comprehensive plan. How to protect and preserve the beauty of our open spaces and how to bring revitalization to our downtown. We have worked to study our water and sewer infrastructure and come up with a master plan to improve it. And give our great and wonderful water department the tools they need to move forward. As Tim mentioned, we have hired a hydrogeologist to give us an honest assessment of our aquifer health. And to provide us recommendations to augment supply to ensure continuity of water for our future generations. That would be quite a resume for five to ten years, let alone eighteen months. Our goal is to leave Woodbury in a better position for the future, so when the next board takes over, their cupboard is not bare. We are far from finished and we still have a great amount of work to do. There are still laws that need to be promulgated, projects that need to be done and relationships to repair that broke down long ago before we took office. Yet despite all this and despite the fact that we've been more transparent and engaged with the public like never before. We have been vilified by some people in this community, we have been the subject of unfounded rumors, childish tantrums and outright lies attacking some of us very personally. We are here for one reason, to serve the public for as long as the good people of Woodbury wish us to do so. We are not here to be attacked, nor are we here to be punching bags for those with obvious agendas. I for one will not sit back and continue to let this happen. I am truly saddened and sickened to see the friendships that have literally dissolved. And people disparaged over lies and rumors that have never been true to begin with. I have truly come to believe there are people who thrive on conflict and would do almost anything to continue it to maintain their status or positions. If we want a sustainable future and a better Woodbury, then we need to work together and end the conflict. We need to root out those who wish to perpetuate it. I fully admit for my own personal self that I may be overly brash or seem a bit assertive to people at times. But I'm also brutally honest and very transparent and those things are definitely not mutually exclusive. What I will promise you is this, when my time as a trustee is over, I will have done everything I possibly could have done to leave Woodbury in a better place than when I started. We are doing what we can to ensure Woodbury has a bright and strong future and that requires hard decisions. These decisions are not made in a vacuum, they are made utilizing the decades of professional business experience we have as a collective group. While all that may not be popular with everybody at all times, they are made in the best interest of Woodbury's future. We have work to do and we are willing to continue to do it. We have a relationship problem with our town government has festered far too long and needs to be repaired. While there are some who despise even having a village, the two governmental boards are not only necessary, but vital to ensure our future. We need to start working together in a symbiotic relationship rather than a confrontational one. This problem started long before we took office, but we are willing to look, work to end it. There are still many things we need to do, many decisions we need to make and changes that have to happen in order to sure, ensure Woodbury thrives for the long term. Status quo and what used to be are no longer what needs to be to ensure the future. We are committed to continuing making these hard choices and tough decisions and it is up to you, the good people of Woodbury, to decide if you're behind us. Thank you, be well and good night.
Thanks, Chris, trustee Gomez.
Oh. After you two, what can I say, but thank you all for coming out. Uh, I want to go get, congratulate all the seniors that graduated to you there, Chris and your son. Um, my son moved up also, so congratulations to all of them, they had a tough year, I think they've come through with flying stars. And just keep, keep safe, be good and kind to each other if we can. And uh, have a great night.
Thanks, Jesus, trustee Buick.
Thank you, Chris, you should have warned people to get a snack this week, not last meeting, just saying.
Bring him in a handout, I'm gonna bring pizzas from my board comments from now on.
Please, please do, um, good evening, everyone, thank you all for attending, um, I, I will apologize in advance for. Uh, more lengthier than normal comments uh, for me, um, no snack is needed though. Uh, there's been so much misinformation floating around that I hear from people or see on social media. That I think warrants addressing at least some of the issues here tonight. Land use laws, as uh, our attorney Kelly can attest to, are complicated, sometimes overwhelmingly so. But necessary to help shape the character of our community. With that being said, it is critically important to understand the role each board plays in the creation of local laws. Adherence to local laws in terms of development, along with exceptions being made for those laws in certain situations and when certain criteria are met. The first is the responsibility of us, the village board. It is our responsibility to introduce, revise and inevitably establish local laws. Which include land use and zoning laws in the village, so for example, ensuring that buildings aren't built to be above a certain height. Ensuring that our water sources and wetlands are protected when land is being developed. Also upholding the character of our neighborhoods to make sure that any newer buildings aren't unlike the rest. These are some of the examples of the laws this board has introduced and have enacted into law. Every law set forth by the village board has a public comment period where the public has the opportunity to give input on local laws introduced. As you've seen tonight, we had four, maybe five. The second relates to the planning board's function, uh, the planning board is responsible for making sure any applications submitted to the building department. Which are required to go before the planning board for review are planned out in a way so that our local land use laws are adhered to. You'll notice if you watch any of their meetings, the review of these applications is intense and oftentimes very lengthy and technical. Whatever laws the village board sets forth must be adhered to by applicants before the planning board. And these laws will be reflected in the plans ultimately approved by the planning board for development. The regulatory powers of the planning board usually include the review of subdivision plans, the review of site plans. Issuance of special use permits, review of signage, historic preservation, environmental conservation and architectural review. If I've missed any, I apologize, those are the big ones I know of. While this board does not establish the local laws, that is not the job of the planning board, because that is within our power, that's the village board. They do too, hold public hearings on applications before them to allow for the public the opportunity to speak in favor or against any given project. Last and certainly not least is the zoning board of appeals, all zoning boards of appeals are given direct appellate jurisdiction by state law. Appellate jurisdiction is the power to hear and decide appeals from decisions of those officials, us. Charged with the administration and enforcement of the zoning ordinance or local law. This is the primary function and the purpose of the ZBA and zoning administration and encompass, and they have the power to interpret the zoning ordinance and local law to grant variances. A zoning law is a community's guide to its future development, that is its purpose. It is not meant to be just another governmental intrusion, another bit of red tape to be untangled before a property owner can go ahead with his plans for development. The protections afforded residents and property owners within the community from undesirable development come from the restrictiveness of zoning. Traditionally, zoning is characterized by regulations contained in a local law and are applicable uniformly within each district. A landowner could look to a zoning map and regulations and know that if they follow them, they have the right to use the land in any way given in that specific district. And that a neighboring property would be subject to the same restrictions in the same district. But of course, there's always caveats, all land in the district may be subject to the same rules, but because no two parcels are identical. Problems will often arise, which is why we have the ZBA. There has been a lot of mention lately, and this is very long winded explanation, but to get to my inevitable point. Um, a lot of talk lately about different projects that are proposed in Woodbury and whether or not of our residents here in the community are in favor of them. There have also been some comments being made and schools of thought that have been presented where people are stating that the various boards shouldn't quote unquote, allow these projects to become a reality. Here is what is absolutely critical to understand. Landowners have rights to develop their land in accordance with the current land use and zoning laws in effect at the time when their application is being made to do so. We have done as a board, everything in our power over the last 18 months to tighten up zoning laws and enact laws that are more protective of our environment. But as long as a landowner or developer works within the confines of those laws to develop their projects, there's really not much more we can do, even if we don't agree with a project. So there may be some contention with the number of local laws we've recently introduced, but there is a method to our madness. If anyone has questions, I also implore you to go to the source of the information regarding these projects and proposals. In my opinion, there is nothing worse than indulging in a Facebook game of telephone when dealing with misinformation on projects. I can tell you from speaking to the various members of this board, we all are very well versed on these projects, what's involved and we'll be able to point you in the right direction towards ascertaining accurate information for you to use to properly educate yourself should you, should you so choose on the various projects. Don't use Facebook as a source of information because people will often throw things out there to see what sticks. And while I understand not everybody has the, the time to go digging through our laws, happy to answer any of your questions. Any of us on this board is approachable. Just to set the record straight so that you understand what our powers are and what they aren't, to avoid any, any future confusion. As you can tell, I can go on and on about this topic, but I think I have made my point. And with that, I thank you all for attending. Have a happy and safe 4th of July since we will not be meeting again until after. Thank you all. Have a good night.
Trustee Jacque Maza.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you all for coming out tonight. I for one, am not as optimistic as my fellow village trustee, trustee Graziano about the town village dynamic. Why you may ask? Because through one primary and two general elections, all with town board involvement and one election involving my friends on this board, I know it's not possible. This past weekend, sandwiched between my daughter's prom, graduation parties and a death of a friend, I had this little gem thrown at me by a member of the town board's park subcommittee and one of the organizers of the first responders day. Hey Andrew, how you treat him? And this is in reference to Gary Thomasberger, who recently retired. I maintained the Facebook page for the village of Woodbury and posted a goodbye or happy trails to our head building inspector for almost three decades or three decades. And this is what I had and I deleted this, just so you know, I deleted this comment, but I have a screenshot of it. Deleted it because it has no place on a congratulatory post for a man who has done so much for the village of Woodbury and the town of Woodbury for that matter. Hey Andrew, how you, how did you treat him? Do you, do you believe that you would have retired if you had treated him with the respect he deserves after serving our community for over 30 years? If it wasn't for the fact that people are afraid to lose their jobs, I'm sure we'd be hearing more about the unfair treatment you bestow upon village employees. I'm petrified to see what you will do as mayor. So that was pretty vile. Okay. Trying to understand what makes a person say things that are clearly untrue. Gary retired because he had just maxed out his pension. He had been here long enough. Not because I treated him disrespectfully. It's pretty slanderous, but maybe that was the intent. That aforementioned little nugget coupled with the town board's comments about our new fire recruiter should give you a very strong indication of why I am not optimistic. But instead of focusing on this, I would like to focus on something a bit more positive. For those that don't know, I've been involved with the Knights of Columbus since I was a wee lad of 20 of 20. And the Knights of Columbus is a Catholic paternal organization that spearheaded along with the Kennedy family, Special Olympics, wheelchair initiatives and so on and so forth. And I am very proud to be a member of that organization. But last night I finished my term as president of the entire Hudson Valley. Proudly, we held our annual charity drive dinner and proudly we raised 21,000 for warriors to lords. Lord's Francis, Lord's France is considered a spiritual place where miracles potentially happen. Regardless if you do or don't believe this, it is a place that gives service men and women hope. Men and women who due to their service to this country suffered injuries that no longer make them complete. I am very proud of my involvement. I'm very proud of the councils I have served or served within the Hudson Valley, coming together for such a worthy cause. Many hands do truly make light work. Here in Woodbury, your local Knights of Columbus council has hosted many events to benefit its residents and various charities. It's an organization I am proud to be part of and I encourage Catholic gentlemen over the age of 18 to take part in it. I want to thank everybody for coming and have a good night.
Okay, let's move out to department heads. Desiree, let's start with you. Nothing? Okay, good. Not good. Thank you. Mickey.
I'm good, Tim. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. John Ed.
I just want to let everybody know that we just started our new program and please be patient with us as we work out our kinks with everything as it just started and hopefully it'll take off good and we'll have no problems with it.
Glad to hear that. That's starting up and I know it's been a long time in coming. We had to wait an extra year. So thank you. Chief Brazil.
Yeah, Tim. Just a few things. The, I just want to thank the, the parks for the first responders appreciation day. I personally could not attend from a prior commitment, but we did have, I'd say probably just about a half a dozen, if not over a half a dozen guys respond. With that being said, just a little reminder that, you know, the fire department as EMS, we're, we're volunteer. We don't get paid for what we do. And as a chief and as an officer, if we put 100 hours in a month, that's, that's low balling, low estimate, oh, that number. We average six, 650 calls a year and we're having a lot of trouble, you know, gaining membership and, and holding members. You know, with, with that being said, you know, just to shadow what Andrew said during the town board meeting, it was mentioned from a, a town board member that they were disgusted, angry. I forgot the exact terms. Tried to, you know, not focus on that, that they were about the recruiter not being at the, at the appreciation day. So, you know, just to, just to educate the people that don't know, that just want to assume. That position went into effect June 1st and we were advised, kind of sit back in cruise control mode until we had, you know, an opening meeting with the chiefs, the recruiter, Desiree, two village board meetings, members. And we had that meeting on, on June 10th, I believe, a Thursday, you know, two days before that event went on at the res. And just to backtrack a little bit, myself and, you know, Chief Burke met with the committee for the first responders appreciation day. And we expressed our concerns about bringing the trucks up there and how that entails the, you know, members covering for calls and, you know, showing off the tools and putting on demonstrations. There's a lot of work involved in that and, you know, I'm not going to mention names, but there was probably half a dozen of the members from that board there, from that committee there. And afterward, lengthy conversation, it was great conversation. They were very educated on what that entails and we all agreed that that wasn't the time and the place. As far as recruitment goes up there, number one, we were advised to hold off until we got the facts. And number two, if somebody is up there two weeks into the position and into the recruitment position and they're trying to, you know, sell the recruitment, which obviously would be most of our family members since it's, it was for the responders, that's going to pull the chiefs and the officers away to answer questions and, you know, sit at a table and educate people. And we were all in agreement. So, you know, and the comment I'm referring to down during the town board meeting was obviously Bob Hunter's comment, which Maria attended that meeting and after five minutes of the meeting quietly excused herself for whatever reason it might be, none of my business. And obviously was not relayed that information of what went on and what was discussed, you know, so, you know, for, for Bob in the town, as a town board member to make a comment like that, number one, it's town board. He has nothing to do with the village. So I'm not sure if, maybe if he had his facts correct, then obviously he would know exactly why the recruiter was not up there. The other point is, is actually since Kate, since we had that opening meeting on the 10th, Kate has brought in already four applicants and we're not even through June yet. And, you know, the kicker to it all and the, I, I actually find this comical because like I stated with my opening sentence, I don't get paid for this and nobody else gets paid for this. We're strictly volunteer. So for, and we don't do politics and we don't deal with politics. We don't promote politics. So for, you know, a comment to be made from Bob's mouth about that, that was not a political statement or a political comment about him feeling, I'm calling bull on that one because Kate is running for town board and it's just a, it's just a, a shot to try to, you know, ruin somebody's opportunity to run. I personally will not be around long enough to even place a vote in it, but that's got politics written all over it. So the, the point of the matter is, and why I bring this up is never mind recruiting, which is what was discussed during our meeting. How about the word retaining? Because the village board got an email two weeks ago, a week and a half ago from myself that you've lost, you're going to be losing and have lost seven seasoned members with 15 plus years in this department that are, out of the seven, I believe six of them were officers. That, there's, there's a problem. There's a problem here and, you know, just like, you know, Andrew stated, with the town, with the village, it, it's, it's, it gets to the point where it's just getting pretty comical watching grown adults not play nice in the sandbox. And I'm not afraid to say it. I don't get paid. So i- if it's a matter of just, you know, I had enough, here's the car keys. You can have at it, have with the position. But the fire department alone is in a downward spiral because we cannot retain members that we have now. And, and it's also being affected by the, you know, political bickering back and forth. So with that being said, like I always state, as a chief, we have an open door policy. And if anybody has any questions, comments or concerns, they should get their facts correct and stop again, like, like Tara said, you know, Facebook is now the new Google. It, it just, it boggles my mind that grown adults can pull something like that. So, you know, just to hammer back at that comment, there, there was everything political behind that comment and it was actually pretty childish. So that's it. I have nothing else to say.
Thanks Pat. Chief Burke.
I have nothing. No. Thank you.
Very good. I don't think I missed any department heads. So with no further business to discuss or comments received, can I have a motion in a second to adjourn? Trustee Jacob, with the motion. Trustee Gomez with the second. Do you have any discussion? All in favor? Good night, everybody. Have a nice fourth.